Law poll please. Chair Wunin Obrado.
Here.
Mr. Nero.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Gazzano is not present. Mr. Graziano is not present. Ms. Guam.
Here.
Mr. Guyan.
Here.
Ms. Nettleford.
Here.
Mr. Zangary is not present. Mr. Di Lorenzo is not present. Mr. Harry.
Here.
Mr. Marinello.
Here.
If everyone would stand for questions. The flag is.
Let's officially signify the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the visible for liberty and justice for all.
Sunshine notice? Pursuant to the requirements of the open public meeting back after 231 P. M. 1975 known as the sunshine law, notice of this meeting was published in the November 17th, 2023 edition of the Starlight Report.
Any communications? Don't believe so. Chairman comments? We'd like to discuss the calendar for next year.
Yes. So the, I know there was a question on the summer dates for June, July, and August, and I put them as Mondays because of the concerts, the, the summer concerts. We could change it to a different day of the week if you want. It's up to you guys. I don't know whether there's any conflicts with your scheduling.
I'm sure you already checked it and made sure there's no other conflicts with any other boards or.
No, nothing is held on Monday. It's just.
Which Monday is it?
It's, there is, I'll say, week two.
What's in July?
Uh, July 8th and August 5th.
Okay, it's only two dates? We'll make it work.
There's just July and August, right? Yes.
You'd be working from upstairs.
No traffic at the moment.
I would also like to discuss the time that we start the meetings. I think six o'clock is a little hectic. I know seven was a little late. Uh, we'd like to try 6:30. Has anybody had any objections or thoughts about that?
Okay, it was 6:30.
Okay.
I know how bad, how hard it was to get at six, so coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I do usually make it better than today, but today was.
Once it.
If you call the highway on, it's gonna be.
But again, like I said, once it's this time of the year, if you're, if you're any, if you're behind it, well, you're really behind. 6:30 is fair.
All right, so 6:30 if you can.
Starting when?
I'll notice for it.
Okay.
When do you want to start, start January?
It's on the calendar, so when she.
What is?
It will start January, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Put in bold letters for it.
We should.
Uh, yeah, if you have a schedule of dates, we could just make a motion in.
Yep, I have the schedule. It was actually delivered last, uh, meeting, but there was the question about the Mondays, so I have it, same. And.
Yes, of course. How many, uh, anyone make a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Chair Wunin Obrado.
Yes.
Mr. Nero.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford. Yes. Okay, approved.
Approval of the minutes for November 9th, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Vocal?
Chair Wunin Obrado.
Yes.
Mr. Nero.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford. Yes. Okay, approved.
Our bill list? I don't think we have one this.
Oh, we don't? We'll, we'll do that in December.
Resolutions, we don't have any. Uh, new business, none. And applications before the board? 176 Belmont Avenue, PB 2315. Are you ready to proceed?
We are. Excuse me. Chair, open the chat, Chair.
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, the council's name is Robert Cassiou. It's Robert Cassiou from Maco. And as everybody knows, my location is now Wumbleton Drive in West Orange. I represent the applicant in this matter, 176 Belmont Avenue LLC. My client filed an application seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with certain bulk variance relief to convert an existing vacant two-story mixed-use building to a cannabis dispensary. Subject property is located in BG Zone, and the use is conditionally permitted in the zone. If the application is approved, my client, of course, will convert the building to a cannabis dispensary. The occupant as a tenant will be Neva Verde LLC, as opposed to the owner of the building being the 176 Belmont Ave LLC. The, uh, exterior renovations, of course, will include new front facade, new installation, the signage, and that will be in accordance with the municipal ordinance. The witnesses you'll hear from are the, are a member of the two entities, the architect and the planner, George Williams. I'd like to call my first writ witness. Excuse me.
I have a question. Do you have any attorneys?
Have an issue?
He's kind of started that.
Yeah, we have to wait until the application.
I'm sorry?
No, no, he, he wanted to question.
Oh. I'd, I'd call my first witness, Mr. Dorcel.
Please raise your right hand. You swear to testimony and shall give, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
James Dorcel, 100 H. Avenue, West Orange.
I know, did you get that? It's a spelling, how's, how do you spell that last name?
No, Dorcel.
Oh, Dorcel, D.O.R.C.E.L.R.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ms. Dorcel, what is your occupation?
Much floor.
And are you a member of 176 Belmont Ave LLC? Are you also a member of Neva Verde LLC?
Yes.
And does 176 Belmont Avenue own 176 Belmont Avenue in Belleville?
Yes.
And how is that currently used?
Uh, ground floor is vacant. The second floor has a, a two-bedroom apartment that should be vacated over the next few days.
And what is it you are seeking approval to do before the board?
Approval to open a dispensary, cannabis dispensary.
Now, should that application be approved, how many employees do you expect you would have?
Uh, 68 employees.
And what hours are you seeking to operate?
8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
And can you tell the board generally the layout of the proposed facility with regard to the sale procedure?
Sure. So, uh, when a consumer enters our space, they check in with a, with a lock.
Can you, what?
Would it be better if the architect put up a rendering to show? Sure. Sergio?
Can we have the?
More plans? If you could just one minute, Chair, I think it would be better understood if we had a rendering.
I agree.
They have.
Do you have a computer to connect?
Yeah.
All right, then let's just go with it. Everybody's got it in front of them. You've got a copy in front of them. Please explain the layout of the proposed area.
Correct. So, uh, when a consumer enters on the left-hand side of our building, they enter into a control area where the security guard is going to check their IDs, uh, ensure they're engaged. Uh, once they've been checked in, they're allowed to. Sorry. Don't worry. So, once they've been checked in, we confirm age, we confirm who the consumer is, we allow them to space. There's two different point-of-sale opportunities. One of which is, uh, you'll see on the left-hand side of our, uh, floor plan, uh, the ability to use a kiosk, self-serve. On the right-hand side, there are display screens, there's some seating areas where if you wanted to work directly with a, um, uh, a budtender, you would have checked in with the security guard and access it out to work with someone one-on-one. So that person will be assigned a number. We have the team that's, uh, working the, uh, from a, a, a rotation perspective on the next customer up. We'll take it to the screens, we'll, uh, make sure we place your order ASAP. So whether you use the kiosk or you use the, uh, work with the budtender to place your order, uh, there's no products on the floor. All products are stored in inventory space. Uh, you'll see behind the counter, there's an inventory room, there's a window, it's an interlock system, so from, within that controlled environment, uh, once your order's placed, either from a kiosk or working through the budtender, the order will be fulfilled in the daily inventory room. And from the daily inventory room, it'll be placed in the interlock window with someone at the, uh, an employee at the counter who will then, who will pick up and based on your customer number, fulfill the transaction, collect payment. And when you're done making your payment, there's a separate exit on the right-hand side. You'll see a different landing area where we buzz everyone. So that, again, interlock systems, there are cameras in every room. Uh, you enter into the room, once we've confirmed you're the only person in that room, we buzz you out to exit the building. Uh, from a security perspective, we're gonna have 24-hour maintain, uh, camera systems, there are alarms, special lighting in the front and on the sides, uh, in the back of the building. Uh, we've also, uh, brought on a, a security company that, you know, we'll touch on as well, but, uh, that's sort of the client experience when we walk in and, uh, to purchasing a store.
Do you have a state approval for this proposed use?
Yes, we do. We were approved on, uh, August 17th of this year by the state for an annual license, which allows us to, to, uh, to order.
And do you have a municipal approval?
Yes. Uh, March 8th of, uh, this year, we were, uh, approved.
Now. Should this application be approved, where will the product be stored?
So all products are stored based on the guidelines required by the state. There are no live products on the sales floor. Products are either in the vault, which is upstairs, and then the vault, or, uh, downstairs in the daily inventory room.
Now, you've reused the proposed service area. How will the product be given to the customer?
Products should be given in sealed package, um, uh, no products should be opened to consume on, on the premises.
And will we be doing any delivery to customers?
We are planning on doing.
And, uh, during the regular business hours?
During regular business hours, deliveries will typically end at least one hour prior to closing.
Now, if they wish to deliver, how would that order be placed for that request for delivery?
So orders have to be placed online or we place in person, but all deliveries are prepaid deliveries. We don't, uh, pay cash on delivery. Uh, and there, all the deliveries go out in, uh, Sprinter-type vans. Uh, there are two employees for every delivery, one person that stays with the vehicle. All products are, um, in, through lockbox. Only someone with a key can have access to the products. So one person exits, the vehicle is an employee that made the delivery, the other person stays with the vehicle at all times.
Now, how frequently will deliveries be made of the product to your place of business?
Uh, delivery to, to us, uh, will take place at least once a week, um, you know, from different, uh, vendors.
And what type of vehicle will be making those deliveries?
Those deliveries will also come in advance, most likely something that looks like a Sprinter van, as close as I can describe it.
And what kind of security will be taken with regard to the time of delivery from it comes, comes from the delivery vehicle to the vault?
Correct. So from a security perspective, we will have at least two security guards at all times, so there'll always be someone that's within the security closet, and there'll be someone that goes out with the security, with the delivery team to take in the delivery to our receiving department.
Now, you've gone over security extensively, but still, it's a very important part of this application. Have you had any conversations with the police department of Bell or anything like that in conjunction with this?
Yes, I've had the police department out to our location, uh, showing them our floor plan, walking through where cameras are going to be located, security measures for deliveries, uh, making sure that we have full, uh, understanding of how to photo ID all clients and, uh, making sure that we know when someone's entering, when someone's leaving, which is why we took the extra step of making sure we had two separate exits.
Now, will the product be allowed to be used on premises?
No, no product can be consumed. We have a system that we are, even with the customers that are waiting on the budtender, it, it is a very active process of getting clients in and out of the store, and we have a, an extra security guard who's gonna be rotating, you know, between inside the store and outside the store, making sure no one's loitering.
So then there'll be no odors that would emanate from your place of business?
No odors at all. There's specific guidelines around packaging, i.e. for children packaging, or this whole wall smell.
Children?
Children, yeah, so everything's packaged properly, so a child can't access some gummies or, so everything we sell is, is coming from an authorized dealer.
We need child security.
Child security packaging. So there's, uh, everything's packaged well, no smells, uh, just not easily available for someone to, uh, have access to it from a smell perspective, where, you know, we, we will not be nuisance around smell.
And obviously, there's no smell. I assume there isn't any inordinate noise that would be coming from this kind of a business?
You know, where retail store, customer is going to be, you know, we're gonna average anymore from three to 10 minutes, depending on the lines again, people hanging out. So we don't expect any, you know, any noise issues, not like we're playing music or anything along those lines.
Madam Chair, I have no further questions, just wish.
Um, I, I have a quick question. Your, uh, security company, are they going to be armed?
No.
Not armed?
Uh, we are not, uh, gonna have armed security. We're actually, uh, planning on using Sterling Security Guard, so they're a company very known around, you know, the community, uh, so they're gonna provide us with two security guards, where we're not looking to have armed. We think there's actually more of a exposure of having armed security versus not having armed security.
Sterling, like the ones that guard the CVS when people just walk in and just mob crash everything and they just stand there, right?
Yes.
Probably.
Uh, one more question. Could you show us on the map here exactly where the truck will be coming and how it will make its deliveries?
Yeah, so, uh, the truck will be parked in the front and, and, you know, use a dolly to, to get to the back of the store, which is where deliveries are done. So all deliveries have to get checked in to security first. So once we check and validate who's delivering, then we'll, we'll walk into the back.
I have a question. What time of the day are we making deliveries?
Most deliveries.
One time of the day and keep it in that kind of general area or?
So most deliveries are done in the morning, but, you know, we can't, you know, ideally we, we're gonna request prior to opening, but there's no guarantee on when, uh, you know, those brands will deliver their product.
I have a question. You have two, you had two security guards, one outside to check for loading and something, you know. What would happen to the people that just walk into their co, partner complex right across the street? Your guards are not, are not gonna go over there and stop them from loitering over there?
Well, no, we're only asked to security. We can't control across the street, but we can certainly, we'll make sure anyone that comes out of our place is in, in front of our building, using the product or, or loitering. You know, but if they walk, you know, 75 feet away, I, you know, I.
And there's a concern with you not exactly knowing the time that your deliveries are gonna happen, especially within the loading zone, you know? You actually need that, because traffic there is just horrendous, and morning, afternoon, night, it really doesn't matter, there's no parking anywhere.
Correct. So we don't, we can't control, like, no brand, no dispensary can control when deliveries are actually gonna take place. You know, it, it's not even controlled by us. We make a request to the vendor, and they do their best to accommodate.
Yeah, well, you wouldn't have the problem if you asked me, well, then ask them for a variance for the loading dock. You would have somewhere for them to go.
Yeah, but I think part of where we're at is this is a pre-existing of this building, you know, it was a retail, this store prior to, no loading dock.
That doesn't make it feasible, that is actually right, or something, when you're trying to.
Well, it's down, you know? Unfortunately, it's not something we have the ability to face.
Could you tell me?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you tell me approximately, uh, each delivery, how much product will be delivered?
Uh, you're probably talking four or five small boxes. This is not.
But a value?
A value? Uh, I mean, probably $10,000 to $20,000 worth.
Now, we're gonna just walk it around the building with no armed security?
We're gonna have security, there's not, we're not gonna be armed.
How long do you expect it will take for the delivery to be made of product to your place of business?
Uh, you know, once they get there, they get checked in, we'll check them in immediately, confirm, you know, the actual deliveries, and I would say maybe within a four, five, six-minute window, uh, in and out.
And will you make every effort to try to get the deliveries made early in the day?
Absolutely. I've personally been in touch with multiple brands, and they, they're committed to getting us early deliveries in light of the fact that we don't have a loading dock. Uh, they just can't guarantee, but, you know, uh, they make a commitment to try to get us in as early as they can the day prior to even opening the store.
Well, I would assume you want, you want it clocked every seven o'clock in the morning so someone could come. It'd be easy for that, at that point.
Absolutely. We, we want totally avoided.
You don't want to make it that easy for them, but you're walking around the building.
We've had applications like this before and before, and we made a requirement for them to have armed security guards. Is that something you would consider?
I mean, we certainly wouldn't. Uh, I just think we also have safety issue that comes with armed security as well.
It was, um, I believe with the last one, we, we, they suggested they were gonna hire, um, retired police officers here with our, at our.
Can I request that if the board were to make it a condition that we only require one armed security guard at any one time, as opposed to having all of them be armed security guards? I think it's difficult for the security companies to provide people who are armed security, all armed security guards.
And I believe during delivery, I'm sorry, I believe during deliveries as well, they would have, they had in.
I understand.
I, I'm concerned about the delivery. I would, I would like to see somebody armed, because you're, you're walking around a building. And if you're gonna do it every morning, and it's a lot of money, and.
Oh, I don't think it's every morning. Can you please explain how frequently the deliveries will be made?
Not a bit. No, I, I, yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I think especially since you don't have an internal loading dock, the, the issue that might arise in tempting people to try to just come after your, your product? We made the other guy do it, it's, it's only fair if one has to the other.
I discussed an armed security guard with my client. He understands that the board may make that a condition, and he's willing to accept.
Under.
What other witnesses are you gonna call? Because I have a question.
Architect and planner.
I have a question about the proximity to the school.
Well, uh, the planner did a study as to proximity to the school. Based on my understanding and my conversation with the planner, there is a nursery school on Franklin Street that he has clocked, As the Crow Flies, at 589 feet, which would take it 89 feet out of the violation.
All right, I guess I can bring that up with him.
Absolutely. He's prepared to discuss it.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? The public? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, everyone. Michael Sheldon, 47th Glen Street. I, I want to start off, um, by stating the council passed the necessary resolution to allow cannabis to be sold at 176 Belmont, uh, in, on March 8th, 2022, is resolution, resolution 18.
Yes, Mr. Cassiou stated that.
However, title of it says, "Resolution of the Township of Belleville will support the location and operation of the adult-use cannabis retail facility by Labida Gardens LLC." Not 176 Belmont, as appears on the agenda. So you go through all the whereas's, and we get to the now part, the all-important part. Uh, section two says, "The mayor and the township council of the Township of Belleville will support the application of Nevea Verde LLC and their application of Class 5 Retail Cannabis License to be located at 176 Belmont Avenue, Belleville, New Jersey." Uh, Mr. Cassiou did mention at the start of his, uh, speech that the, uh, LLC is Nevea Verde, but everything that's been advertised, the legal notice that was published for this meeting, what appears on the agenda, it's a different LLC. It's 176 Belmont Avenue. So you've got three different LLC names gravitating around this site, and, you know, there's a, there seems to be a fundamental inconsistency. Granted, Nevea Verde may be owned by the same people that own 176, but for the sake of legal consistency, don't you have to have the same name on all of these associated legal documents? I, I, I'll leave, I have multiple copies of this. I'll give this as evidence to Mr. Obrado, if you want to see this for yourself. You've got, so you have the council itself having two different names for the LLC involved with this project. Labida Gardens at the, at the title, and then on the second page, uh, uh, Nevea Verde. And then the legal, published legal notice for this application at 176 Belmont at the start of the meeting tonight, Mr. Cassiou said, "No, it's not 176, it's, uh, uh, Nevea Verde." So I'm wondering if it may be wise at this point to adjourn this meeting and make sure that you have all the proper consistent legal notices across the board before you go any further? I, I.
Well, this, this, this board can only grant to the person who applied to it the relief that it's requesting. And the person who applied to it is 176 Belmont Avenue LLC, I believe that's the applicant.
Right, right.
So that's who we can grant. We can't give relief to any other company.
Right. At 176 Belmont, if you check the cannabis regulation, regulatory commissions website for approved licenses, nowhere does 176 Belmont Avenue appear in the list of approved cannabis operations. Nevea Verde does. Nevea Verde appears on that list. I checked at 5:00 today, they sorting last-minute filings. So again, you have, you have an entity, 176 Belmont, that's going through the legal procedures tonight to get approval, they don't apparently have, are not recognized by the CRC, the licensing. Nevea Verde is, but again, can you, can you do this mix and match? You know, spin off and get that one, well, one LLC kind of owns the other LLC. There are these, these basic inconsistencies, and I wonder if this is, is a fundamental legal problem in proceeding further. I think that the attorneys, the applicant, need to make, need to get their house order to make sure that everything that's been filed has the consistent, uh, business and legal registrations before you go further with this. And I, I did have a concern about the armed security guard, Mr. Obrado, Mr. Guyan, I, I, I fully concur with you that there has to be at least one armed security guard at, at this site at all times.
Right, but now we're.
All right, well, that's, I was gonna ask that question as well.
Let's get, let's get this through first.
All right, well, okay, so I'll shoot back to my seat. I just wanted to.
Well, you can stay there, even though this was not the appropriate time to bring any of that up. Bob, do you want to respond to the issue?
I do. The applicant on the application was 176, the owner of the property. The owner of the property has leased the property to Nevea Verde, which is the tenant, which is the entity that the town approved and the state approved and are authorized to dispense marijuana. So we have a tenant, Nevea Verde. Many times I handle applications where an owner goes for an application, gets an approval. The situation here, I said at the outset, when I opened in the case, that Nevea Verde is the per, the entity that will be the tenant and will be dispensing the product. So I think that's sufficient. I have no idea who the first name, Mr. Sheldon, said it was. We have no idea what that is. But we're, we're.
It is in the, it is referenced a couple of times in the resolution that was provided to us.
In the, uh, March 8th resolution.
Now, I mean, I would say this, under my understanding of the law, under my understanding of the law, there is, the use is not necessarily required to be to a particular person. In other words, if the use is allowed at a site and the tenant who's running that use sells the business to another company, they don't need to come back in for another use variance.
Absolutely not.
So the use is what attaches to the property, not necessarily to the operator. And I don't think, unless you're gonna tell me something differently about the two entities that are here, that there is any distinction as to why, I mean, I, we could put a condition in the application, assuming this was passed. There could be a condition in the application that whoever it is that operates at that location has to have all the proper licenses, whether it's this entity or another, I think you would want to make sure of that. But assuming this business went out of business six months in, and they brought in a new dispenser, they wouldn't necessarily have to come back here for a new use variance.
If they had all the approvals from the town and the state.
Assuming they had all the other licenses. So, I mean, I'm inclined to think that from a legal perspective, that this use is to the property and this is the property owner who's applying for it. I think that would be actually more appropriate than if it was just a tenant. And that's. Although I do recognize Mr. Sheldon's point about the inconsistency, especially this issue of this other company that I've never heard of before and apparently has nothing to do with this application. I don't know how that got in. Maybe there's a, maybe there was a cut and paste job done by somebody. I've been guilty of it myself.
I'm sorry, I just want to interrupt. The resolution tour that was approved for the V of, the V of Verde LLC was actually resolution twenty-two eighty-two and that was approved on March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, which is resolution number twelve. What you're giving me here is resolution fourteen.
The applicant, the resolution that I have approving, the heading talks about Navea Verde LLC. I don't know what Mr. Sheldon has.
Um, he has, um, Labida Gardens LLC, which that is another resolution, which we did, um, approve the same day as Navea Verde. So this is a, this is a wrong resolution.
Can I, can I see that a minute? But it has the same.
She was saying it was.
That doesn't even have, um, that's actually probably a, a, something that went out on a packet for a, for the council members and somehow you received it because it doesn't even have a resolution number on it.
That's, that's what I found by basically doing Google, a Google search.
I don't know how because, um, it doesn't even have a resolution number on it.
That's, that's good relevant with the Google search. I just showed the resolution that runs in Navea Verde.
Yeah, it looks like the one that is for Labida Gardens, which I don't, I don't know it.
So this is.
It appears that that was a type, typing error.
No, what happened is that this is page two of that one and this is page one of another resolution. But if you real, if you noticed it, this is resolution fourteen, that's resolution.
Twelve.
Twelve.
They're two different resolutions.
And this one doesn't have a resolution number on the title because this is supposed to be twenty-two dash eighty-two. And that's probably twenty-two, I'm sorry, the twenty-two dash eighty-two, so that was fourteen. So this had, this one had to be resolution twenty-two dash eighty-four, if I'm mistaken. I could pull up the Labida resolution if you like. I have it on my, on my files.
Just to set the record straight, I now remember the source of that resolution. When the council had previously used the iCompass system, when they were using the online system to make their agenda packets available, that was pulled directly from the civic web iCompass system, from the packet that was publicly posted. Now, if there were changes after the fact, they weren't reflected from the original posting made by the clerk's office through the iCompass system. But that, that is what was in the PDF as was made available for the March eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting through the iCompass system, which I guess is formerly, at that time, was formerly recognized as the official communication mechanism for the council and the municipal clerk. So I, I, whether what happened down the road, if they went in and they, they saw typos and they changed things around, so be it, but that's what, that's what exists on the iCompass system for March eighth, twenty twenty-two.
So this is incorrect.
This is, um, this is, this is, this was a draft. This is what happens when drafts go out. Okay? Um, drafts shouldn't be going out because mistakes like this and incidents like this can occur where there's, where there's a lot of misinformation. Okay, so just to put it in the, um, the records, resolution twenty-two dash eighty-two was adopted March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and that was for Navea Verde LLC. Okay?
So, all right, all right, well, so be it. But it's just so that I understand what Mr. Gashiong and Mr. Marinella are arguing. Even though the property is owned by one seventy-six Belmont LLC, which isn't a licensed cannabis operation, they are going to lease the property to Navea Verde, which does have the license and that, that is allowed by law.
Well, they could lease it to somebody else, but they're telling us they're going to lease it to this entity. One seventy-six Belmont, I assume, does not have a cannabis license.
They do not.
So they're not going to be able to operate it themselves.
But obviously, any approval runs into the land that's common.
Yes, but it has.
It's running to the property with a licensed person being Navea Verde.
I I think for purposes of just clearing this issue up, that if, if a vote is taken to approve the use, it makes sense to put in the applicant, in the, uh, approval that the, uh, application is conditioned on there being a licensed, properly licensed cannabis retailer at that site, whether it's the current one or one in the future.
Right, that, that's perfectly suitable for, for me. I had another question, but actually it was what Mr. Banaro started to ask and that was about the proximity of schools to the site. But we'll wait for the planner's testimony before I, I bring that back up. All right, thank you. Thank you for the time.
Madam Chairwoman, if you want to make that a part of the record, if you do, I'll turn in the state license too, so you got it a part of the record if you want.
Yes, please do.
It's, uh, it hasn't been submitted before, right?
They have.
Like an A-one?
A-one and A-two, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, um, are there any other questions on the public? Yes.
Uh, Adam Caster, forty-four, Park Street, Bloomfield, New Jersey. I was just hoping you could, I don't think you touched on waste disposal.
So I'm just hoping.
The architect will be.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anything else? All right, so we'll close that portion. If you can proceed.
Excuse me, one second.
Please raise your right hand.
One.
Okay. That's not allowed.
How dare I? Usually would turn away and do this, but. Excuse me. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Please give us your name and business address for the record.
My name is Sergio J. Chavaria.
So. Oh, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Last name is spelled C-H-A-V is a Victor, A double R-I-A. Business address is twenty Crestview Drive, Stanhope, New Jersey.
Proceed. Mr. Chavaria, what is your occupation?
I'm a licensed architect.
How long have you been practicing in the field of architecture and what school did you graduate from?
Twenty-three years. I graduated NGIT nineteen ninety-one with a bachelor's.
And you again are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and your license is current?
Yes, it is in good state.
Are you a member of any societies, professional groups connected with your work?
Uh, yes, American Institute of Architects and, and Car.
Just briefly give the board the benefit of some of your experience, briefly.
I've testified in Bloomfield, Bergen, Bergenfield, uh, probably about half a dozen town councils.
And we accept that as an expert in the field of architecture. I need you in every occasion.
Yes, I have.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you. Could you please describe existing site?
Uh, the existing site houses a two-story masonry building. Um, one on the northeast side is a one-story addition that was, uh, not the original apartment, but it was added to us somewhere to the unit. Currently, the building, uh, houses or was vacant below, but I believe was a former valley on the first floor and the upper level. As, as the advocate described before, it's a two, uh, two-bedroom apartment on the upper level.
Can you give a little more detail with regard to the existing structure on the site?
So the existing structure has a masonry exterior painted. Uh, our plan is to re-clad that, close some of the windows for security purposes on the upper level and on the northeast side. Re-clad that with a lap and plaster cement finish. And on the front side facing Belmont, I'll put a, a near stone at the base up to, uh, up to the, the lower parquet on the northeast side.
And do you have any revised drawing of the exterior of the building?
Yes, I do.
Can you, do we have those to submit to the board members? An adjustment has been made to their plans to comply with the ordinance?
Just, the raw code. So you didn't discover? It's a S K one and S K two.
This, this has got to be A three, I believe, what, what he talked about, wishing with this whole, but I think it's A three. It would be a revised exterior of the building.
So the reason of, of this edit is basically in response to the October thirtieth letter.
It's a stone, it's a stone.
We got two more copies. I'm sorry.
There's more copies here.
So this should be verified by the purpose of, of the edit or to address the October thirtieth letter. Item number four on the second page, here's the requirements of twenty-three dash seven eighty-nine, which touches based on the, the use of twenty-five percent minimum of either a stone or brick material to break up the, the, the front facade. On the S K one, I tabled at the top left of the, uh, of the facade, basically that ordinance basically calls for a minimum twenty-five percent of stone material, brick or, or stone or something other than stuff. Basically, the area calculated is the total facade of the front up to the, the higher level roof. Uh, total of five sixty-six square feet, twenty-five percent of that is a hundred forty-two minimum. The stone area that I, I'm demonstrating on the facade occupies about two hundred square feet, so we're slightly inaccessible to minimum.
All right, would you please review the interior makeup? I understand that the applicant reviewed it, but as an architect, if you could please review the interior makeup of the first floor.
So the first floor basically occupies, um, obviously the controlled entrance and exit from Belmont Ave into a, a common area once the, the patrons come in. There is a secure portion behind the counter and the upper level where, where the product is going to be stored, brought down to the, the level of sale and then, and then controlled fashion as the applicant described. So the, the lower level is basically primarily for retail space. The upper level, which is currently a two-bedroom apartment, will be converted to office space and a secure vault area, a common break room and a bathroom for the, for the employees.
Can you give a little more detail about the interior makeup downstairs, in particular, where customers will be served?
So the customers, after they enter the secured entrance, uh, they're, they'd be queued up or, or greeted by, uh, I guess an employee to, to describe, well, or, you know, answer any questions they have to the product they're planning on purchasing. Once that's completed, they would go up to a counter and the product would be brought down from the vault to the point of sale.
Can you review how waste or garbage generated from the site will be contained and disposed of?
In, in general, there, there is really no waste that would be emanated from, from the product that's being sold. As the applicant described, it's packaged, sold, and they take it off to another place. The waste that's basically being produced there would be basically, basically paperwork or any type of, uh, you know, food items possibly that would be brought from the, the line from above. The waste, there are, there is in the rear of the property, we've put a, uh, an enclosure, chain link fence enclosure for both recycling and, and there's waste that will be buggied out through the site, the northeastern side of the facade out to the front.
Can you review where the security cameras will be placed?
On the exterior, there are security cameras at three of the corners of the, of the building, northeast rear, northeast front, and the, and the, the front right side, that's right next to the adjoining property.
Were there any on the interior?
There are several, uh, cameras on the interior. Uh, this was actually, uh, reviewed by a, a security camera, contracted, provided by the owner, and these were reviewed, scrutinized by the, their, their team to make sure there was no blind spots within the interior space.
And no further questions, please, please.
I have a, a quick question. It doesn't appear on the stairwell. If there's a door, it's going to be open?
Yes, that is, that's an open stairwell to the upper level, correct.
We don't, I don't know if that's a security issue. All right.
I'd like to refer to before the proximity to the preschool. I mean, I do it on my, my phone.
I think.
Something to the planner.
To the planner?
I'll make it to his very first question. I'm sorry if I did that quick.
I missed my screen yesterday. My fault. I'll save it for later. Your, your enclosure in the back for the garbage, not on the plans, we can't see what it's about or anything. I'm, I don't see it.
It's on the first sheet, A zero, which shows the cyclone.
So we have a privacy fence around the entire property?
Not around the property, just on the, no, not on the high property.
Where is it? Where is the fence?
It's on the southwest and rear of the lot. Basically, right, right side rear of the property and the rear fence.
So we're screened, we're screened from all the neighbors, basically, right?
Yeah, that, that was a request on basically, basically the, the engineer's, uh, letter. You know, I had indicated the recycling and trash would be behind the building, but in addition to that, I would provide the, the chain link fence enclosure.
And the condenser units are screened in too, right?
Chain link fence.
Sorry, the, sorry.
Chain link fence from the neighbors or chain link fence?
From within itself. It seems to be redundant, but that's.
The trash enclosure, you mean?
Correct.
So the neighbors have a privacy fence?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right.
And the condenser units are screened also by?
By the neighbor's fence, correct. And the building.
And the garbage is basically your expected municipal pickup of your waste?
Yes.
But you don't think any trash is going to be generated?
Yeah, there will be trash generated, for sure.
Yeah, but you said it's not anything feasible, not a lot of amount, you know, just regular.
No, just, yeah, they'll use much paperwork receipts.
In terms of, in terms of the, the landscaping plan, the streetscaping plan, I, I like look at the building, are we, I don't see on, on the site plan, obviously, I don't, I don't see, uh, the landscaping plotted out. We're going to do the landscaping and even the planner boxes, we're going to do all that.
Yeah, that's actually, if you look at A zero and actually being on A one, uh, the front brick pattern in the planter box is indicated on the, on the.
Okay, so that'll all be there.
That'll be.
In terms of the streetscape plan, you have it there, it doesn't really mesh up to what the township one is. You'll work with the, with the engineer to make sure that we get the, basically the right plan?
Yes, I will.
Right streetscape plan in.
Yes.
One other question. Uh, the sign, the sign says it's a backlit sign. What kind of lighting is that? Is that an internally channel lighter or is that a halo effect?
A halo.
That's a halo?
One other item that I believe the letter of October thirtieth mentioned was the lighting, uh, on. on the exhibit SK one, I indicate some recessed lighting below canopy.
I see that.
And also some wall spot that's blanky either, either door.
I think that's good.
Anybody else have any question?
Is there lighting in the rear of the building?
What did she say?
Is there lighting in?
Yeah, there, there has to be lighting by, by code to, at the exit, at the exit doors.
What lighting do you have planned for the rear of the building is what Mr. Viner is asking.
I have planned floodlighting and a, and a fixed light fixture at the exterior door.
When you say floodlighting, what floodlight, from where, from off the building, throwing down, shooting down on the ground, what, what do we do?
From all, from the building, the rear facade, which I believe has no windows, down to the rear patio.
So none of it will spill over to any of the.
No, it will be performed to not have any over to the, the joint property.
As far as the back door, will it be transparent or will there be a camera there that they can see who's there?
There'll, there'll be cameras that will be able, will be able to see when the door is open, someone's approaching the door, these doors are solid, like exterior, the rear door is a solid door, no, secure door with, with a tamper-proof hardware. The front, basically glazed, is a security glass for us, so you can't see with, from the street, you can't see inside, you can possibly see just a shadow, but you can't see the, the.
Any other questions?
Is the, the glazed glass, so you can't see through a security requirement?
Yes, it is.
Is there any questions for the public, Mr. Sheldon?
Good, you can leave that, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. I'm, I'm looking at the Google Earth street view of this property, there's a small, one story building, which has a sign on it called Trackside Coffee Shop, and Senior Coffee, cluttered roles, et cetera, and then the, the two story building, which I assume is going to be the cannabis, according to the number on the door, the white door on the right side, that's actually 178 Belmont, but my first question is, is this small, one story building, is that going to be taken down or does that remain in place?
You're looking at the picture.
I don't have the picture.
The picture shows that there are.
It's going to be all expanded.
Well, is that to one person answering that?
So it's going to be expanded, it's going to be encompassed into the principal structure. So both, both buildings will be then 176 Belmont or will it still be a combination 176, 178? What is the new address?
Well, that's really not relevant to the application, it would be the tax successor who makes that determination, not us.
From the street view, the smaller building, the 176, there's obviously a curb cut in the street, so I guess this thing was added after the fact onto a drive, a driveway. The smaller, one story thing was obviously added after a driveway had already been in existence. Is there going to be any onsite parking for this establishment? I don't think that was been addressed.
Definitely not.
No.
No onsite parking, all right, okay. All right, that's all I have at this moment, thank you, thank you.
State your name and your address for the record.
Hi, good evening, Natalie Rowe, 189 Heckle Street. My property is behind 176 Belmont Ave, so can you repeat what is, are there gonna, is there gonna be a security camera in the rear of the property?
Yes, there is.
Is it continuous monitoring?
Yes, there is, 24.
And the fence, you said is a privacy fence, what is it made of? What's, what's the material?
Right now, I believe it's a chain link fence with slats in it.
The plans show a vinyl fence.
Vinyl fence would be better.
That's what they agree to a vinyl fence. I thought, I saw the plans, too, I saw vinyl.
We agree to a vinyl fence.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, I think that is the condition as far as having vinyl.
Vinyl fence is fine, best made of condition.
Any other questions? All right, we close this portion. Mr. Gassion, you can proceed.
Good call, Mr. Williams.
Williams, please raise your right hand, you swear a testimony shall give on the application, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Good evening, Commissioners, I most certainly do.
All right, please give us your name, full name, and your business address for the record.
Certainly, again, good evening, my name is George Whittle Williams, Williams with an S, my business address is 105 Grove Street, suite number three and four in Montclair, New Jersey.
Mr. Williams, would you please review your qualifications?
Certainly, I am licensed by the State Department of Professional Planners, nationally certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, I completed my graduate studies in city and regional planning at Rutgers Graduate School, now known as the Glauson School of Planning and Public Policy, to date myself a little bit, I've been practicing in this field for a little over 30 years, with a primary focus, of course, on land use, community and economic development planning.
Will I accept your qualifications?
Thank you.
And could you please review briefly what you did to prepare for this meeting?
I'm not known for being brief, but I'll try, we approached this application the way we approach every land use application, that is, with a review of the local land use documents, in this case, your 2021 master plan reexamination report, the zoning ordinance, and all of that in the context of the municipal land use law. Also visited the site, myself and my staff on more than one occasion, having an office in Montclair, I'm familiar with the area as well, we also, I also reviewed planning literature and case law in support of our application this evening, last but certainly not least, I did have an opportunity to review your board planner engineers memo and the zoning officer's denial letter.
Before you go any further, key question, what did you do to determine that the conditions of the conditional use were met, in particular, whether or not, or any schools, nursery schools, or what have you, within 500 feet of this site?
If you'll permit, Commissioners, I'll answer that question parenthetically, and then as I work through the foundational information, I'll get to a very specific answer. As part of our office's efforts and analysis to confirm that this application met each of the conditional use standards, we did conduct measurements from our site to any local preschool schools and daycare facilities, as well as distances from this site to other cannabis retail operations in this, in the municipality. For the one in question, the closest was at 578 feet, we used Google mapping to do that, and it came at it, I wanna say, give me one second, I will be engineering an exhibit that will show graphically what I'm about to tell you, 589 feet from our site to Love and Learn preschool, if however, one were to walk and take the easiest path towards a school as opposed to that, as a crow flies distance, that would be a long, the light rail platform, and then it becomes a little bit further away at 650.
And that's a nursery school or preschool on Franklin Street, is that correct?
That is correct, the exact address is, give me one second. I don't have the address handy, but I can find it in my files, but it is on Franklin.
It is Franklin.
Mr. Viner, I'm sorry, what did you ask?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I should say Franklin, Mr. Viner.
All right, I'm gonna return to your proposed questions, can you give us a brief planning overview of this application?
Certainly, so I'll try not to be redundant, the applicant and our project architect gave a very comprehensive description of the project and the operation, I'll just repeat a few foundational statements for the record, and then give a broad overview, and then introduce my exhibit, and get to the proofs that are required. From a foundational purpose, again, the property is commonly referred to as 176 Belmont Avenue, and identified in your municipal tax records as block 1302, lot number eight. As was mentioned in the chairwoman's introductory comments, this is in the BG Commercial Residential Mixed Use Zone District, and the site is approximately 3,604 square feet. As was discussed, there's an existing development on the site, you've just seen a picture of that development, it was a former coffee shop with a residential component above, and our mod for tax records suggests the building was constructed individually back in 1906, and then more recently, now vacant, but Trackside Coffee Shop was used in the property.
Can you give us a brief description of the project from a planning perspective?
Certainly, just to back up for a minute, in terms of relief, as this board knows, it is a conditional use application, board council mentioned that a few moments ago, I will go through the conditional use standards individually in a few moments, but from our analysis, the applicant meets each of the conditional use standards, which is how this board maintains its jurisdiction. The zoning officer's denial letter did mention a potential variance for the facade treatment, if you accept the testimony you heard from our project architect a moment ago, that variance seems to be no longer needed, and that was from section 23, 7.8 I.
Is there any relief you have to discuss?
Not truly, in terms of the, there are a couple of pre-existing non-conformities from your bulk and area standards, now distinguish them from conditional use standards momentarily, but they are all pre-existing and under the Court of Sini court case, it's my understanding that extra relief is not required because these are pre-existing conditions, we are not exacerbating these non-conformities, in point of fact, they are not called out as variance requirements in your zoning officer's correspondence. Therefore, it's just a matter of walking through what the conditional use standards are and how we meet them, some of that I've preemptively discussed already.
You wanna review the general planning issues, you wanna get into those specifics of the.
I'll do the general first, if you indulge me, just so the board members are comfortable and clear, as this board knows, conditional use applications are for users that are considered permitted in the zone district, for which they're specified, as long as they meet the standards, so there's a presumption that they are appropriate for those, that zone district. There are a number of court cases that address this, one is Exxon Company versus Lincoln Township, in which the court found that the essence of the conditional use concept is that every site within a district which is able to meet the objective standards for suitability are entitled to qualify for that use. I hasten to add, notwithstanding that conditional use permitted characteristic, the board is also able to review ancillary C variances, that is, variances from the general bulk and area standards that are not specific to a conditional use. That would include, for example, the facade treatment variance that was initially mentioned in your zoning officer's denial letter. In Lincoln Heights, the Township of Cranford, the court found that relief sought by the applicant were not specific to conditional use standards, and so the planning board has jurisdiction again to weigh them if it found that the adherence to those standards was impractical. In this case, again, they're all pre-existing, non-conforming deviations from your general bulk and area standards, not from your conditional use standards, and given the testimony given thus far, in my opinion, we, the applicant, would not seek any additional relief. The other thing that makes this very interesting, perhaps not unique to you, I heard one commissioner mention you've already reviewed one application, is that this is an emerging land use, Belleville saw fit to recognize it as a conditional use, something that should be permitted, based in large part by the state law, which as you know, changed, I believe, in 2020, allowing dispensaries both medical and adult retail. In terms of the impact generally on the neighborhood, in my professional opinion, if you were to approve this application, there would be no negative impact on the immediate vicinity, in fact, this permitted use would, if you approve our application, improve the community based on the aesthetic improvements testified to by our project architect, again, facade treatment, the lighting, the security, and the removal of a vacancy in this BG zone district. So based on all of that, in my professional opinion as a planner, there's, there are ample proofs in support of this application, I'll get into that right now. As you know, your code codifies conditional use standards under section 23, 7.22.1, basically establishing again that retail, adult retail cannabis is a permitted conditional use in the BG and other BG zone districts. That section also sets forth the conditional use standards, and as this board knows, and I think I said in my introductory comments, an applicant must meet those conditional use standards in order to be before this board, in my opinion, the applicant does. The first condition of five is, and I'm going to refer to my notes for this, no cannabis retailer shall be located within 500 feet of a daycare facility, preschool facility, or school, I'm going to share an exhibit with you momentarily, but based on my measurements, the applicant comports with that conditional use standard. Number two, no cannabis retailer shall be located within 1,000 feet of another cannabis retailer, and again, based on my analysis of the Belmond records and in consultation with the applicant, it's my opinion that we, the applicant complies with that as well, and the exhibit will specify further. Number four, drive-through services are prohibited, prohibited, as you've heard from both the applicant and the project engineer, architect, no drive-through facility is contemplated for this application. Finally, Commissioners, I appreciate your patience, any site, number five, any site proposed for use by cannabis retailer shall be subject to site plan review, which is the purpose of our attendance at this evening's public hearing. With that, what I would like to do is share a very simple exhibit, I promise to be brief, this is, what is it, A four?
A four.
Casualty brief, A four.
While Mr. Gassion is handing these out, Commissioners, A four is a very simple exhibit, I'll refer to it as a storybook exhibit with 10 slides, I always say that the land, local land use boards are familiar, more, as familiar with the site, if not more so than I am, I'm really just sharing this for context as I lean into the conclusion of my testimony. Madam Chair, should I continue?
Yes.
Okay. Slide number two. Slide number two is a simple aerial photograph, and we use NJDEP GeoWeb as a source for this, our site is highlighted in blue, you can see it's a narrow rectangular site along Belmont Avenue, very close to the light rail. Slide number three, moving along, is simply a capture of your zoning map, again, identifying our site, highlighted in blue, and clearly in the BG Commercial Residential Mixed Use Zone District along Belmont Avenue, once again. Slide number four is added just because there is no parking along this section for our site, and limited parking along Belmont Avenue, it shows the available public transportation options, which include, of course, light rail, and a number of bus routes, specifically Route 27 and Route 90. Slide number five gets to Commissioner's question earlier about that conditional use standard, about distances from public schools and daycare facilities, our search yielded two, one, Love and Learn preschool on Franklin, and we measured that at 589 feet away from our site, again, if you were to, that's a, as a crow flies, excuse me, again, if you were to take the easiest walking path, it would be a bit further, because you would walk out to the rail platform and walk approximately 650 feet to that daycare. The other one is much further away, 795 feet from our site, and that's a Jane G, James G Schwager School. Slide number six goes to the other conditional use standard, and that is the requirement of a distance of 1,000 feet away from our site, we drew a 1,000 foot radius. We drew a 1,000-foot radius. It did not capture any of the other cannabis establishments in Belleville. As you know, there can be only four. The three that are, have been approved are 27 Washington, 524 Washington, and 709 Washington. All of them are across town from our site and well beyond the threshold of 1,000 feet. So those are the conditional use standards. The remainder of the exhibit just paints a picture of the site and its surrounding land development pattern. The land development pattern in this area is clearly mixed use with almost zero lot setbacks. And many of the businesses along this area don't have parking either and have, for that reason, unable to have loading areas on site. Slide number seven is a frontal view of our property. You've already seen an image, I believe, from Mr. Sheldon and also our project architect. So this is just our field survey and capture of that frontal view. Slide number eight, just showing another typical mixed-use building along, in this area in a BG zone district, note the setbacks, et cetera. Finally, commissioners, slides number nine and 10 just go a bit further, capturing similar development in the area with slide number 10 being the outlier because it's significantly larger. Commissioners, with that, I will address the reliefs. In my opinion, no additional reliefs are required. We have met the conditional use standards. We have eliminated the need for facade treatment variance, and that leaves only the pre-existing non-conformities. Those non-conformities are not from the conditional use standards. They're only from the general bulk and area standards where...
And those are all pre-existing. Is that correct?
Correct. Those, I'm sorry, those pre-existing non-conformities are for front, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, and loading area.
And no further questions in this room?
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. I don't know, Mr. Hertz, did anyone from the town measure the distance from this facility to...
No, I didn't.
Unit?
I don't know if I did.
I think somebody from the town should measure. I'm looking at your radius map too. It is 1,000 feet radius. This doesn't look too accurate to me. You're saying that the supermarket is more than 1,000 feet away from there?
Yes.
It's more than 1,000 feet?
Yeah.
Looks like you got about 10, 25-foot lots. I can't see how it's more than 1,000 feet. Another question, or a big concern of mine, is we have number four school. Now, I know that it's 750 feet away, but I don't know if you guys are aware, number four school also has the bus stop for the middle school and the high school. So all the children in Silver Lake from Franklin Street, I guess, south, they all have to walk past that location. If they're going to number four school, they're walking past there. If they're going to the middle school, or if they're going to the high school, they're walking past that location because they have to go to the rear of number four school, which is Belmont Avenue, to access the bus. So it's probably the busiest location in Silver Lake for school-aged children to walk by. And personally, I don't think that's a good thing, to have hundreds of school-aged children walking past a cannabis distributor. My second concern is being that you don't have a loading zone.
Should I address that one first?
Sure.
Okay. What I failed to mention during the recitation of my qualifications is that I have, I also represented land use boards, some of which have reviewed applications for medical and retail cannabis dispensaries. And then secondarily, I've represented at least two other cannabis, retail cannabis dispensaries. Commissioner, to your point, based on my research of the planning literature and my experience, it's a good point, but I would just remind the commissioners that we are governed by the Belleville Code, which establishes those thresholds, right? One for schools, preschools, daycares, the other for other cannabis. So the distance threshold is 500 feet. I understand that your concern is the traffic flow from school to this area. I would just hasten to add that one of the reasons the state requires the frosted windows is that it will not act as an attractive nuisance. So even if you walk by, you, a student or other young person walks by, you're not attracted by images through the window. There's no odor. There's no signage that says or hints that this is a cannabis store. So that's one of the reasons, no matter where you go in New Jersey, you'll see the frosted windows. I can wax philosophical and say, I don't really agree with that because it's a permitted use, but that's the law, and the applicant's complying with that.
Yeah, I like that better than Omar's smoke shop. You can see everything in there.
Yeah.
It's a concern. I think the school-aged children are pretty intelligent. They're going to know what the building is. They're going to have customers coming in and out of the product. And I just don't feel it's good for this neighborhood. And my second concern is being you don't have a loading dock. I know if I was driving a delivery van with $20,000 worth of merchandise and there was no parking, what I would do is double park and get the merchandise into the building as fast as I could. And double parking at that location, you're within maybe 100 feet of the light rail, and I think that would even create a safety concern. People trying to go around a double parked vehicle, and now you don't see the light and you're crossing an active train track.
I'm going to try and answer that as best I can without going astray of my qualifications, and the applicant may wish to add more. I don't think that the applicant's intent is for delivery trucks to double park. I will add that this is a pre-existing retail establishment that has managed its deliveries for quite some time.
Yeah, coffee shop, I mean, it's a different kind of deliveries. You get coffee cups and coffee that's worth $20. It's not a package worth $20,000.
Correct. Value-wise, you may be correct. But in terms of frequency of deliveries, size of deliveries, they may not be as far apart as you think. The applicant has committed to having armed security for the deliveries. What I would just add is that from my experience in Hoboken, for example, where I'm a board planner, distance from site to parking or loading is considerably more than what would happen here. With the armed guard, they've had no problems with that establishment. There are several in Hoboken, but I'm referring to one of the two.
All right. Well, like I said, there are two main concerns of mine. If anybody else on the board has questions.
Do you want to ask questions on the floor? I'll close this portion. I'll open it up to the public. Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening again. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. What I'm about to ask largely parallels what Mr. Venero discussed a moment ago regarding the 500-foot distance. Just for the record, I have a copy of the relevant ordinance, 3627, which had its first reading on July 13, 2021, and second reading and final passage on August 17, 2021. Mr. Williams quoted on page five, the distance is established by local ordinance, no cannabis retailer shall be located within 500 feet of a daycare facility, child, preschool facility, or school, limited to public and private. He gave the other five conditions, but I don't think he also, I don't think he mentioned number three, which says that cannabis consumption areas is defined in this act and prohibited, both indoors and outdoors. So there is another condition there. When the vote took place for this...
Wait, you're asking a question.
Mr. Sheldon is correct. I'm sorry I omitted that. The applicant did testify earlier that there will be no consumption on premise or off premise. Well, immediately off premise.
I just wanted to get that because that's a critical thing to note. When this vote took place by our council, it was a 5-2 vote. The two no votes were from council members Natari and Marie Sturmerl Burke. If you want, I think Corinne was, might want, do you want a copy of this for your files or... If you want, if you want, it's just, it's fine. I have this. But if you, if any of you should want to look at this.
Yeah, she can always forget it.
All right. Well, you can keep it if you like. I have a question about how the 589-foot distance was determined. It is my understanding, as a former zoning board member and as a rookie aficionado of municipal land use law, when distances between properties are measured, they're to be calculated from property lines...
Well, look, the expert tells exactly that.
Well, let me just look at premises by what my understanding is, that you measure relevant distances from the property lines with the most favorable measurement benefiting those who may be adversely affected by the project.
Wait, you have a good question.
Yes.
How did you measure it? Let's ask him how he measured it.
All right. Well, I, actually, it's clear from slide number five, which I want, I would like everyone, you have this in front of you, because this is my, yeah, based on the slide that Mr. Williams provided. If you look at the...
Mr. Sheldon.
Yes.
Please, let the man answer.
First thing is, we already testified.
He's the expert. Let him, let him.
Madam Chair, the first, he's already testified as to how he measured. He'd be happy to do it again.
Yes.
Well, he did not, he did not testify as to what points he used. He just said that he measured it at 589 feet, whatever it is. So it's got an answer.
But I can't disagree with you, Joe.
Everybody else does.
Join the club, right? Mr. Sheldon, again, does ask a good question. Mr. Sheldon pointed out the ordinance. I'm going to flip to my copy of that page for a second. As I look, what's unique or interesting about the Belleville Code, unlike other codes that I have either reviewed or written, it doesn't specify the mean or type of measurement. It just says the threshold is 500 feet. It does not, or 1,000 feet, depending on which threshold you're referring to. It does not give specification like as the crow flies or what the most common pedestrian path might be, or by radius. So we used a commonly accepted online measuring tool, Google Earth, to come up with our measurement, and we got the 589 feet.
I also use, I also use Google Earth. And yes, you will get about 590 feet, give or take a foot or so, if you measure from door front to door front. But if you look at slide five, you'll notice that the blue, the blue grid is the property for the proposed cannabis site. Notice that they're measuring from the Belmont Avenue side, the farthest point from the preschool. If you were to measure from the back of that property, and the preschool is in a small strip mall, they're in the, kind of the middle. But if you measure from the closest proximity points, the back of the lot or 176 Belmont, to the lot for this little strip mall, guess what? 465 feet. It's under 500 feet. So now the question becomes, does the law allow you to measure door to front, door to front door? Or do you have to measure from the property line? It's always been my understanding that you have to measure from the closest approach of property lines, not where the physical doors, entrance points, are for the businesses. And if I'm correct, and you know, maybe I, you know, I have to give Michael Kates a call to just let him, let him...
Hi.
No, I might be threatening, I'm not threatening, but no, I, Michael Kates has always told me that if I ever have any questions, you know, to feel free to consult.
This is a ridiculous conversation.
It really is. Mike, Mike, I know you have, you actually have a really good point, which you often do.
All right, I take that back. I take that back.
Because you don't ask a question. This is the time for questions. All this other stuff you can ask at the end.
And the question is, do the distances have to be measured from property line to property line or from front door to front door?
Okay, that's a great question.
Okay, thank you.
Let's let him answer.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree, it is a good question, counselor, and I would repeat what I said earlier. It's governed by how the code in Belleville is written. Belleville does not establish measurement criteria akin to what Mr. Sheldon suggested. I'm not saying that Mr. Sheldon's preference is wrong. I'm just simply saying the code is what the code is. Again, I've seen other codes that provide way too much specificity, so there's no confusion. I would just hasten to add, once again, it wasn't the applicant's intent to game the system, mislead anybody. We simply went from the front of our building to the other sites we found in our search.
Yeah, I wish I would have brought my 2022 version of the Cox book with me tonight. But again, it's my understanding that the municipal land use law, which trumps any local procedures, lack thereof, that the municipal land use law, which regulates how these things are to be determined, clearly says that the distances have to be measured from property line to property line in such a way to be most favorable to those who may be adversely affected by the project. And when you do that, Google Earth has well under 500 feet between the involved two property lines. So there is a fundamental question here. Is this project then in compliance with the local ordinance, which requires at least 500 feet between properties? Or is there some ambiguity or wiggle room here that can be exploited? It's something that I think the lawyers need to address and perhaps research before you move forward with this. You need, you need an absolute conclusive decision here before you move to approve, to approve this or deny it.
And if I may, very quickly, again, to Mr. Sheldon's point, and I don't, I don't want to speak for you. I don't know exactly what section of the dangerous municipal land use law, Mr. Sheldon, to which he's referring. I'm assuming he's referring to guidelines for notice. As this board knows, when your municipal clerk provides the map for notices, and Mr. Sheldon's correct, the municipal land use law does prescribe standards for that. I can't say this enough, the Belleville Code for cannabis conditional use standards does not prescribe any measurement standards, or we would have followed them.
I have nothing more to say. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that you can make the argument that the involved properties here are within 500 feet. Depends upon how you interpret the municipal land use law measurement procedure. I think it would be best, in everyone's best interest, to make that determination. Thank you.
Can I just argue that just one second? The municipal land use law, or the Cox book is being referred to, does not apply to this. This is a municipal ordinance that talks about measuring. It doesn't say specifically what it is. No cannabis retailer shall be located within 500 feet of a daycare facility. As my witness, Mr. Williams, has said, they don't go further to describe the method of measuring. You could say along the street. You could say whatever you want. He took. By the crow flies, directly 500 feet, door to door, which is a normal way to take it. That's what we've done. That's the premise we've proceeded on, and that's why we're here.
I think, I mean, look, this is not an area I was prepared to, been prepared for, that I didn't even notice really would be an issue. But there's definitely a question about how this is measured. But let's assume for the moment, I'm now being told from someone here that this daycare facility or preschool is in a, in a strip mall. But let's assume that the strip mall was much larger than the strip mall is now. And it was at the far end of the strip mall. And the door to the daycare facility was 500, was 1,000 feet away. But the property line of the strip mall to which the daycare facility was in was 400 feet away.
Right.
It seems to me that it would make no sense for this ordinance to be read to be to the nearest property line. It's designed so that we can be assured that this location is 500 feet away from where the children are. So if the property line of a large strip mall was only 400 feet away, but the daycare facility is 1,000 feet away, it would make no sense to me that the intent of the ordinance was to make you measure to the front property line, therefore making this conditional use violated, or at least that portion of it.
It looks like it's actually two storefronts in.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know what it is, but my point is, it doesn't make sense that it could have meant to the property line of that building because, now, in this case, I will grant you, Mr. Sheldon, the point. We don't know exactly where this is. It's not, it's not specific to, we don't know anyway, other than this Google drawing where it is. But it, measuring it from property line to property line doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense if the use is part of a strip mall where it's further away. That would seem to have been defeating the point of the 500 feet. Now, I don't know how far it is from point to point. I don't have it. The only, it seems to me at the moment anyway, the only thing we have in evidence is Mr. Williams' calculations. Mr. Sheldon, when he's sworn in and testifies, can testify to a different distance.
Well, Mr. Sheldon agreed, front door to front door was 590.
I, I, well, I agree.
He didn't dispute that. He's talking about that property line being...
I'm just, I'm just saying that as I, as I look at it, whatever Mr. Kates once told Mr. Sheldon, and I respect Mr. Kates, he's a good lawyer, but whatever, whatever Mr. Kates told him may not apply here based on the way our ordinance is written and also based on the common sense reading, that if this thing was further down the strip mall, it doesn't make sense that it could mean the property line. So I, I don't, I would take issue if that's what the advice was that was given. That doesn't seem to make too much sense to me. But when Mr. Sheldon gets up to testify, I think it's, that would be the appropriate time to put in what he thinks the correct way to do it is, and what he measured that distance to be, and then it's part of the law.
Thank you.
I got it, I mean, I, I think that's a, a huge concern. If it's supposed to be more than 500 feet, and it's not, then it's not.
Yeah, well, I would agree. In fact, you don't have jurisdiction if it's less than 500 feet. They have to go to the zoning board, so-
Well, I mean, I think that's a, I mean, I know he's an outstanding gentleman here, and he's been on many boards, but usually we have the town, uh, or engineer or traffic confer to this that it is indeed, and if the, the ordinance reads 500 feet, to me, 490 feet isn't 500 feet.
Right.
That's pretty clear.
Well, I mean, look, you, you know that the board is not required necessarily to make a decision on this tonight. They could refer it to their own people and let those people, if you're, if you're not sure, I mean, look, I don't think anybody here wants to walk away from this meeting with the anticipation that the board's decision would be appealed, because nobody knows the exact distance. That's something that can be certified to by our own town people as to what the distance is, at least what they think it is. So then it could, then it could come to you to vote on after they've had an opportunity to look at that. I, I think your concern's a really good concern. I just don't know the legal answer as we sit here right now, so-
Why don't we set a condition in approval that the, either the engineer or the building officials do their own measurement? And confirm that it is 500.
Yeah, I don't think we'll vote on it until, until the strength of the trust.
Not enjoying. First thing is-
If we do, our vote's voided anyway, because it's not our, it's not our jurisdiction. If, if it's wrong and they don't meet the condition, it's defeated. It's voided. And then it does have to go to its own vote.
Well, there is a, the only problem with that, Brian, and I appreciate your expedience, your, your expertise, but first of all, this is not going to have a resolution prepared before January 8th, which is plenty of time to have concluded whether or not it's 500 feet. But the, the first question that has to be answered is, how do you measure the 500 feet? Right? Because, uh, I don't know whether Mr. Williams did the measurement from the back of the property line to the strip mall.
What's the wording, from facility to facility?
Well, I think what, what Mr. Sheldon is suggesting is that it's from property line-
That's not what the court says, though.
It definitely does not say that.
It says facility.
It says 500 feet.
From, to the facility.
It just says 500 feet, it doesn't say-
Mr. Gashiong. I'm sorry.
You read it to us, right?
First thing, I'm sorry.
You read it, you read the actual ordinance to us, right?
This is it, right?
I read the ordinance, that's what I was reading.
Five, cannabis retailer shall be located, no cannabis retailer shall be located within 500 feet of a daycare facility.
Facility to facility.
If I may point out a couple of things before we continue. First, there's a state approval there. I believe all the information about this location had to be submitted to the state, probably including what was in the area. In addition, there's a municipal approval here. So this is a site plan review, no question. But I don't think, based on what we have in front of us, with a town ordinance that doesn't tell you which way to measure, and with a state approval and a municipal approval already in place, this should be denied based on that. I understand Mr. Vineros' concern. He doesn't like the idea of cannabis. I'm not saying what I like or don't like, that's irrelevant. The town voted for it. It doesn't matter if they voted 5 to 2 or 4 to 3. That's the law today. It's a permitted conditional use in this location. Their ordinance, their ordinance does not give you any specifics as to where you measure from. Is it logical to say that if a school or nursery school was on 10,000 square feet, you got to measure the outer line? It doesn't make sense. What makes sense is door to door. That's the access point. It's not a situation where a gigantic farm that had a nursery school on it would stop a cannabis deal application. The, agreed, I understand Mr. Vineros' concern, but that's philosophy. That's his concern, that's his thinking. The law has to be faced. That's what the law is, that's what the law Bevel passed is, that's what Bevel supported, that's what the state supported. We all can understand why, we know why it's been passed. But that's, my client is taking advantage of the law and has a right to do that.
Does it-
I think you'll have to make it tomorrow.
Anybody else have any comments?
My client just wants to repeat, have me repeat, that the state approved this and used the same distance information, same Google map, et cetera, and it's been approved.
As well as the zoning letters from the city.
Let me ask you this question. Are you saying that the state application has a 500-foot limit from-
No, I'm not saying it, because I don't know.
So why did the state care about our 500-foot limit?
Don't know the answer, that's what my client said.
State, as part of their conditions, requested a, of an app confirming distance from schools, and also zoning law from the city confirming that we were in the right-
And that was-
And I, and I appreciate that, but they're not concerned with the people of Belleville the way this board is concerned with the people of Belleville. And I'm not sure that that's a way to rely on the state of- if the state did that, then we wouldn't have to do any measurement, and your, your very good planner wouldn't have had to testify at all about the 500 feet. But that's not the way it works. They got to meet our ordinance. And I wouldn't normally be this concerned about this, except that this is a jurisdictional question for this board. If, if it's 501 feet, whatever the legal determination is that we determine it's 501 feet, you can't vote on this. It's got to go to the, to the zoning board. And I'm, I'm not trying to cause any issues for the applicant. I, I'm, I'm inclined to agree that absent any distinction in the ordinance, that the 500 feet would be door to door. But I don't know that, because I hadn't researched that before I came here tonight.
Well, I don't think you can get the answer through research. The town has an ordinance. We got the ordinance in front of us.
But there are, there is case law that is out there, and I'm sure that it may not be the first time the 500 feet has been addressed by a court or an appellate division.
No question, but it would be, in my opinion, addressed with regard to zoning issues such as notice, not with regard to this kind of situation, which is basically-
You might be right, I haven't researched it. It's not going to be, I will say this, there won't be any law on cannabis with regard to the 500 feet. But you know this as a very experienced, uh, land use attorney, it's not unusual for conditional uses in every town to have a distance between one use and another. Uh, or many, there's a lot of times where you see you don't want, Gas Nation is a conditional use, but it's only in a certain area. It can't be within 100 feet of a school or whatever, or a hookah shop, or something like that. There's conditional uses all over the place. I don't know whether there's any law on it that we can rely on, but I know that it exists. So if 500 feet is, or, or 1,000 feet, those are very common things in conditional uses.
Absolutely, I agree. Having to do a liquor license is most of the time.
Yeah, that's another good example. So maybe there's a case, I can't cite it right now.
All right, are there any other questions from the public? Mr. Brent Dantoni.
Mr. Brent Dantoni. Uh, Mr. Williams, uh, when a public hearing is required, like on this case here, are you familiar, you have to send out notices-
I am.
-surrounding neighbors?
Yes.
Uh, do you know what distance do you have to cover, knowing by neighbors?
200-foot radius.
And how do you measure that 200 feet?
Typically, my recollection is it's from the four corners of the site.
Exactly. That's the point I want to make up, so I think that clarifies it a little more.
Well, again, my distinction is, Mr. Sheldon mentioned, and again, I don't want to put words in Mr. Sheldon's mouth, but he mentioned that Cox, the Treatise on Land Use provides standards, or MLUL provides standards for measuring distances, typically for notice. So they give you this, they tell the clerk how to measure the distance, the 200-foot radius for notice. In this case, and I know I've said this before, but it bears repeating, the Belleville code for this particular conditional use standard does not provide those standards for measurement.
Well, it's a check to assume that, and I'm the former director of engineering department, so I would love to believe that. I, the way the ordinance is written, it would appear that it would be reasonable to assume that the 200-foot notice for, for him would be the same way they would determine where you measure from, the four corners like you stated.
I understand why you would say that, and that's why I mentioned earlier in my testimony, when I look at other municipal codes for this particular land use, which I've reviewed several. Different municipalities have different levels of specificity around measurement, so that you, one does not have to assume. In Belleville, there's no specificity for measurement. So to some of the commissioner's points, when you looked at meeting that threshold 500 feet, exceeding it by 89 feet, depicting that we met the spirit and intent of a long Belleville as it's written.
Just want to bring up that point. I think that 200-foot notice measured from the four corners is what we should rely on.
Yes, please come on.
Again, my argument against that is, then you got to take into consideration the size of the property, and you can't do that. That would knock out a piece of property, a, a use, 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet, depending on the size of the property, where the preschool was located.
Yes, yes. Say your name again?
Natalie Groh. Um, I have questions regarding how the applicant or the town may be able to mitigate any nuisance factors that accompany this type of establishment. Um, from what I see, RISE dispensary on Bluefield Avenue frequently has a line all the way wrapping around their building and down the block. And this is a very small property. So is the expectation, or what I would expect, is that there will be many people waiting to get the product. And to the planning board members' point, there is a bus pickup for the middle school and the high school. I know, because I used to wait there. So, you know, anyone who is making their way down Belmont Avenue will be, you know, passing the patrons of this, um, facility. And the hours are, what are the hours of the facility?
The requested hours, the board did not approve until 10:00 at night.
Opening at what time?
I believe Michael said 8:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night.
I mean, so 8:00 is pretty early, um, to have people lined up down the block when kids are going to be walking to and from school and to and from bus stops. Um, as well, although there is no, um, the products are packaged, okay? There is nothing from stopping somebody from getting their product, opening their package, throwing it on the street when they get to 174 Belmont Avenue. And consuming the product, which means that neighbors, such as me, will be exposed to that smoke from the park. So how can the applicant or the town help to mitigate these issues?
So commissioners and the member of the public, this may be a two-part answer. Uh, the applicant may want to reply from an operational perspective. I'll try my best just to reply from a planning perspective. Um, the state, in their regulations, which drive much of what municipalities ordinances are, uh, aren't established to prevent this emerging land use from becoming a, uh, attractive nuisance, meaning attracting people to look into the windows, to see product. In fact, as you heard the applicant say, uh, the windows, and the project architect, the windows are frosted, so one cannot see inside the building while, uh, walking or driving by. I would go a step further to say that in my practice, I've had to visit several, um, or a couple of cannabis retailers. And what I observed immediately tracks with what I believe you'll hear from the applicant if he's called again, that there are no odors, uh, when you walk into the facility. In fact, there are no, um, products that are readily visible, even when you're inside the building. So in terms of being an attractive nuisance, um, there should be no attraction, particularly for younger people, uh, for this land use. Parenthetically, I would argue frosted windows, which are required by the state, actually do attract attention. But again, the state went out of its way to have frosted windows you can't see inside, signage that is not readily, um, uh, attributed to the land use that's inside. Trash is the same as any other permitted use. The coffee shop before us may have had customers that left to discard the trash inappropriately. We hope that would not be the case. I would just add, from a planning perspective, in my experience, most of the cannabis retailers go out of their way to make sure their customers appreciate the availability of this service, and so, and so instruct their customers to be good neighbors, not to discard, uh, any trash in any way. Something that other businesses probably don't feel the need to do, but this is emerging land use, and they are sensitive to other concerns.
I would just say that my client is indicating he can discourage use of marijuana in the vicinity of his shop, but anybody. Having bought marijuana anyplace, in whatever place was just mentioned, can walk by and smoke marijuana, my client couldn't control that, no. I go to a Yankee game. I don't think I've ever gone to a Yankee game in the last 15 years without smelling marijuana. It's prevalent, that's it, you have no choice.
No, I, I have evening strollers after dinner that come up my neighborhood from one corner to another corner, smoking, and, and you can smell it in the house, and it's winter.
It's legal, right?
I mean, yeah. Not at your facility, so I could understand that concern.
Not by me, but a few doors down. Lady's always complaining that the guy next door is always smoking, and she smells it. Nothing you can do about it.
I know.
That's, that's the way of the world. Again, maybe my, my political belief is similar to Mr. Vineros' but that's not what we have going on in this world, right?
I'm not against the cannabis. I'm against the large number of number four kids, the middle school kids and the high school kids walking past that facility. I know it meets the letter of the law, but the letter of the law, I don't know, considered that there's a bus stop, and it's the main area where all the kids from the south side of Franklin Street have to access Belmont Avenue to cut through to get to number four.
Again, we, we have to meet the law with regard to this site plan application and pre-existing both variances.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. Could you, could you please repeat the hours at the operation?
Sorry, commissioner, what I heard the applicant say is, uh, his vote would be 8 to 10.
8 to 10.
Why did he ask for 8 to 10? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 8 to 10.
I thought I was talking to you. I have 8 to 10.
Well, I thought I was wondering, because I thought I initially heard something 6 to 10.
No, that part I got correct.
8 to 10. He's not asking for 6:00 in the morning, no. He's asking for 8:00 in the morning. Again, I understand the board could condition the approval, but he's obviously in a position where he needs to be somewhat competitive with the place that was just mentioned, that I could let the way that-
I feel more comfortable with like a 10 to 10 type thing.
I think he'd be comfortable with a 10 to 10.
But what you said?
That we are feeling more comfortable at the board with 10 to 10. I think that would be acceptable to my client. He doesn't have a choice, he's in the program.
It just gets the kids in school, and it's not open.
Actually, I think school would be 15 for Belmont.
So by the time they come by, by 9, 9 to 10?
10?
Yes, because school traffic, people trying to go to work and everything else.
That's the, yeah, that, that's part of the conversation.
Yeah, we're picking more 10 to 10.
My client will accept that condition. I'm not talking to him, he might be happy with it, but he'll accept it, period.
Okay, 10 to 10.
He's going dagger type, no.
So that's a good condition to have in. All right, are there any other questions from the public? All right, um, there's no other further questions for any of the witnesses. I'll close this portion.
Mr. Maronelli, how, how are we going to proceed with the question about the distance?
It's really the board's pleasure. I mean, the, we haven't had, we haven't had, by the way, the open to the public portion for discussion purposes, which I'm certain Mr. Sheldon is anxious for.
Yeah.
So I think maybe we ought to have that first before you decide it, because whatever he said earlier is not testimony, notwithstanding the fact that it sounded like it. Uh, so I would rather his, his discussion be on the record as testimony sworn testimony. And then it will be up to you to decide, you know, the, I can't give you an answer as I said- And then it will be up to you to decide, you know, the, I can't give you an answer as I sit here today what your 500-foot, what your 500-foot limit includes. My, my personal opinion to whatever that is, the practical sense as a lawyer who's done this a long time, is that absent any other direction, it would seem that door-to-door is the way it should go. But I don't know. And I don't want to say, there could easily be law that contradicts that. There could also be no law, and we could be back here at the next meeting with the same exact situation where I can't give you any more direction on the law. You know, it's an interesting question. It's an, it's an interesting question. I do not believe that it is from property line to property line for the exact reasons I discussed earlier. You have a property that's very large, have several retailers in it, and the daycare center could be at the far end of it. And I don't think that is a reasonable position that when the council decided on 500 feet, that they intended that 500 feet to be to the property line that's so far away from the daycare center. That, that doesn't seem to me to make a whole lot of sense. But the question of whether or not you measure it from the furthest point of the cannabis retailer facility or the closest point of the cannabis retail facility is an interesting question that I don't know the answer to. So, your options tonight would be to either conclude that Mr. Williams' testimony is sufficient. I can't say it's not, and that you believe it's, meets the conditions of the variance, and you could vote on the application to vote for it or vote against it. Or you could ask that the matter be adjourned to another date. And that would give both my office the time to see if there's any research available on that issue, and also an opportunity for you to have your own personnel from the town do their own measurement so that you could feel more comfortable with the actual distance. I would suggest, and I don't know who would do it, Tom, who do you think would do that measurement? Without volunteering you. I know it's not me. But, yeah, but, well, that's what I was going to ask. I think you're going to have to measure it more than one way. You're going to have to measure it more than one way. Because. Yeah, I think that's what you're going to have to do.
Facility is facility, so.
Well, I agree with you on the facility of the daycare center. I don't believe that it's the property.
It doesn't say facility, it says property.
No, it says the ordinance is facility.
The ordinance, which I have on the screen here, says shall not be located within 500 feet of your daycare facility.
Facility.
So, I don't think the issue necessarily, I would argue very strongly that it can't be the property line of that building. It has to be the entranceway to the daycare facility. But, for the property that's at issue, the facility itself, the cannabis retailer is both in the front of the building and the back of the building. There's no, there's no person in the back of the building. Like, you've seen situations where there's one retailer in the front, maybe one retailer has a side door to the back of the building. That's not where this is, it's the, it's the building. So I would think you have to measure it from both door-to-door and then also maybe from the back of the building to the daycare facility. But we could talk more about that. Maybe there's a third measurement we'll have to think of before we measure it. But I do think that that's a realistic question that we don't have an answer for as far as I know.
Even if you do walking, you know, you're walking, are you cutting through the rail station? Are you taking the public right away, which would be the sidewalk, which is all the way around? One would be shorter than the other.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any question as a walking, it's more than.
The distance would be, so if I'm cutting through the train property, that seems like it would be a shorter direct path. If I'm not cutting through that, which would be the public right away, then how round the corner is it?
They could throw over 500 feet to walk. Like, if you're doing it like we said as a profile, it's under 500. Ambiguous, it's not clear.
Yeah, we did the radius online this morning, it might touch the edge of the property line, which is what they're talking about. The property line where it touches is also a grocer, it's not the facility.
Well, you know, you're going to have to make a call on that, I don't, I don't know. Maybe the law will help us. But if it doesn't, then you're going to have to make a call yourselves as to whether or not you believe the ordinance is 500 feet to the property line or 500 feet to the daycare facility. So, I mean, it does say daycare facility in the ordinance, so.
The ordinance would say facility, so I see that winning in court.
Why don't we let the public speak, and then if you want to continue discussion, you can.
Mr. Gassion, would you like to summarize?
I don't have any further witnesses, I'm ready to sum up. Obviously, part of my summation will be the argument with regard to facility.
Do you want to sum up before or after the public?
Oh, I want to wait till the public is heard, I thought they were heard, my apologies. I thought Mr. Frank Tantoni just spoke, and I thought.
No, my question to witness.
Yeah, no, we need your summary, and then we'll open it up.
He's going to summarize after the public.
Oh, after the public, okay. All right, then, this will be the conclusion of everybody's summary, Mr. Frank Tantoni.
Want to swear me in?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've been swaying for Tom. Please raise your right hand. "Swearing testimony shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth."
I do.
And name and address for the record.
Vincent Frank Tantoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue, Belleville. All right, I'll make it very short. I think that this can be denied on the measurement of the, what we're talking about. I think we would use the notice of the hearing, property, corners of the properties as the basis of determining the 500-footage on there. The other thing is, I was going to bring it up, a young lady brought it up. You've got half a block up on the corner of Bloomfield Avenue and Belmont, you have the other one, I don't know if it's Newark or Bloomfield. Every Monday, my wife and I go through Belmont, because we go shop at Aldi's on Monday morning. That place is packed with cars and people lined up. So, if these facilities are delivered, in the same way with Bloomfield Center, the facility up there, you've got people blocking the sidewalk, some people don't even like to walk there because all these people are waiting for the place to open so they can get in there. The other thing that these facilities generate is protesters, like in Montclair. You've got several groups that are up there, and I travel up there often because my daughter lives in Roseland, and we go up there a couple of times a week. And then you've got protesters out there. So that's another thing that could happen here, which are going to block the sidewalks. The other thing I have your basis of, that you could deny it, is no loading zone and there's no parking on the facility. And if you use the one on Bloomfield Avenue, you could see that big, huge parking lot is jammed every day that they're there. And so, those are some things I think you could deny. There's something else I want to bring, the newspaper article. Towns change their tune on sale of recreational marijuana. And the first two sentences, when it came time to vote, two-thirds of the people in New Jersey voted to legalize recreational marijuana. Two years later, only a third of the towns in the state have agreed to allow marijuana to be sold.
This is irrelevant, the law is the law.
This is my time for comment, please don't interrupt me, Mr. Gassion.
It's got to be relevant comment.
Yes, this is relevant. You have some basis like I stated too, right? Well, tell them not to interrupt me, please. And so, based on that, and these other towns, we have 561 municipalities, almost 400 said, "No, we don't want this in our town." And like I told you, my wife's cousin, young man, dead in the lake in Branford Park. Two of my employees dead, one at 28, one at 33, started with marijuana. Pennants with the smoke, you're allowed, I've had tenants complain to me, the guy downstairs is smoking, my kid's up here. It's a terrible, terrible thing. So, where you can find legal basis, and I think there's a couple here that you could, to deny this, it is absolutely terrible for the state. And, you know, we, for years, we tell people, "Don't smoke, don't smoke." And now we're legalizing it, you know, whether it's cigarettes or this pot stuff, you know. We don't want to be a town of potheads. So please, whatever legal things, I think I've given you a thing there that you can deny this thing, please do it. And then I'm going to appeal to the council and the planning board, because you guys in Kahoot make all the laws, to change the law. And backtrack, we don't want this stuff in Belleville, thank you.
"Swearing testimony shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth."
I absolutely do. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Think I have an easy way to at least temporarily resolve this measurement problem, right? As I said earlier, I agree with Mr. Williams that if you measure the most favorable way to the applicant from front door to front door, it's about ES 5889, Google Earth at 590. But, you know, mine was quick. The fact that I'm off my, you know, my measurement differs from his by one foot out of nearly 600 is inconsequential. But it was also said a few months ago, I think it was Mr. Guion's, that the cannabis facility is operating both in the front and the back, right? Now, average lot size in Belleville is 100 feet, and I believe that's the case for this property. Now, if we assume that Mr. Williams and I both use Google Earth correctly, that the distance from door-to-door is 590. If you now measure, leave the door for the daycare alone, but if you measure from the back of the cannabis lot, which is 100 feet, and that, I assume it's a standard lot size, take that 100 feet, subtract it from 589, what do you get? You're under 500 feet, my Perry Mason moment for the night, right? So there is a real urgent matter here about how, what is the actual distance and is it being measured correctly? As Mr. Frank Tantoni said, municipal land use law plus always had the procedure that when notices are given, it's 200 feet from the property line, you go in the corners, draw the circles, connect the dots. Does it make any sense that the municipal land use law would have two different measurement procedures? One for notices and one for determining adjacencies, distances? It doesn't make any, any sense. And I understand that the argument that Mr. Marinelli and Mr. Gassion gave about, well, you know, what happens if you had a farm and, you know, a building on the other side? Well, with all due respect, I know Mr. Gassion and Mr. Frank Tantoni have been around for a long time, but the days of farms in Belleville are long gone. And most of our lots in Belleville are 5,000 square feet or less, they're mostly 50 by 100 lots. That really is an argument about this farm situation or a big strip mall, this, this.
I think the board has expressed a desire to.
Without asking Mr. Marinelli or Mr. Gassion to do case law. By the way, doing quick searches, I already found case law, there was a New Jersey Supreme Court case dealing with the proper way to measure between properties. Before the night's out, I can show you my phone if you want to save yourself the trouble of doing the Google. But, putting all this aside, if you measure from the front door to daycare, give that benefit to the applicant. But you go to the back of the lot for the cannabis facility, and it's already testified that the whole lot's been used for the retail establishment.
But it's also the back door, it's not going to be used.
But it still, still subtracts 100 feet off, you now are under.
I understand that, I'm just saying it's not really being used, it's going in.
If this, the measurement is properly done, correctly done, and everyone makes sure that it's being done according to the tenets of the law, I think that this necessarily has to go before the zoning board for the variance approval. So, with that said, I wish you all good night.
I just want to, I just want to talk to the ordinance before there's anybody else that's going to speak. But, my inclination is not to buy into the argument that the notice under the MLUL is what's controlling here, the 200-foot list. And, the reason for that is because if you, if the ordinance wanted to be written that way, they could easily have written it that way, but they didn't write it that way. And I don't think that it can be assumed that what the MLUL has for notice, which is a completely different reasoning for why you notify those people. And the 500 feet from a school, which is for safety purposes and for maybe, maybe to exposure purposes for the children, I don't even know what the reason was, but I know it's not because they wanted to let people know about it. The notice law is specific for that purpose, because somewhere along the line, somebody didn't get notice who was 200, within 200 feet of the back of the building, but not 200 feet of the front of the building. And I'm sure that that issue was long ago decided that that was the way it was going to be. I don't think we're going to find that the law says that it's measured exactly the same way as the municipal land use law. But we might, which is why I keep saying, I would prefer to look at it if there's a question from the board.
It's definitely unclear.
Well, if you, unfortunately, you're not the zoning board. Because if you had been the zoning board, you would say this 11 feet is de minimis, and you would have voted on this. But you're not, so you can't just make that conclusion.
Can I just rewind that point for one minute, unless there's other people who want to?
I want to get everybody. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before the board?
Can I just have that done based on what Mr. Marinelli just said?
Very quickly.
Very quickly. Mr. Marinelli said that the 500-foot thing is designed ultimately for the safety and protection of children.
I don't know that. I surmise that was the case, but I don't know what the council was deciding between, I mean, is 500 feet? Maybe they felt that they wanted to keep a safe distance, maybe, I don't know. I don't, maybe, I have been behind ordinances that are designed so that you can make a use conditional, but nearly make it impossible for it to be used. So, I've seen it before, you know. I see Mr. Williams laughing, he's seen it before too. So a lot of times you can design a conditional use because the law says you can outlaw the use. But you make it nearly impossible for somebody to use it. So, it happens. I mean, theoretically, if this, if this use were approved and it was 501 feet away, and next month we had an application from someone who wants to put a daycare facility two buildings away from this one, you would have a different situation. At the time you applied for it, it was 501 feet, but after you granted it, it became 50 feet. You can't, you cannot, basically, you can't control all of this. I don't know what the reason was, I'm surmising safety because that's the first thing that makes sense to me. So it could have been any reason.
I agree, but that is a point that Mr. Menero and I think Mr. Guyan's had made, Ms. Nelford as well. There's a, this area is particularly unique in that there's a school bus stop nearby, and you've got an inordinate number of children passing by this area. And I know there's been some concessionary made that the hours of operation now will be changed from 10:00 to 10:00 so that in the morning, children aren't directly exposed to the operation, the patrons using the facility. But, the children do come back in the afternoon, and when they're dropped off, they're, they're going to be going in the other direction right past the same facility, so how do you, how do you deal with that?
I understand your point, but there's definitely, one thing I know, I mean, I looked at the ordinance, is there is no provision that says it has to be further, or 500 feet away from a school bus stop. That's not what it says. And that's impossible to do in a town like this, right? I mean, there's probably a school bus stop within 500 feet of anywhere in the town.
Well, not school bus stop in Silver Lake.
Well, in Silver Lake, maybe in Silver Lake. Well, I understand it, but my point is, that's not what the ordinance says. So if this board were to decide that notwithstanding the fact that it met the other conditions, you wanted to turn it down because there was a school bus stop nearby, that would be a very tough argument to win later on, because that's not what the ordinance says. I mean, a school bus stop could be moved theoretically by the school and the town. I'm not suggesting, I don't know the answers to all this, I think I'm trying to be clear because I don't know the answer. But, a school bus stop could be moved if necessary, if the school board thought this wasn't a good spot for a school bus because of this use.
Well, you know, the town council has allowed for retail operations to exist within the township and an unlimited number of processing and cultivation centers, and I think already two or three of the cultivation facilities have been approved through the Valley section. But, I just hope, as my final word tonight. But I just hope, as my final word tonight, that I don't live to see the day when the, the logo behind the dais gets replaced from cherry blossoms to a green leaf. And I think that's what's going to happen in the very near future.
Does anyone else have any other comments? All right, I'll go close the portion.
Madam Chairley, before I get into my final argument, I just want to point out, the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance says property, not facility. This ordinance says facility. That's the distinction. When you have to serve anyone whose property within 200 feet, this is talking about the facility within 500 feet. A clear distinction. And that's what I rest my argument on with regard to that. Now, on another point. Mr. Sheldon's talking about this being a unique area. This is a permitted use in the zone. The governing body saw fit to allow this. Whether philosophically or not, you don't agree with it, it's allowed. That's the issue here. Permitted use, permitted conditional use. And we comply with conditions based on the fact that you got to be within 500 feet of a facility. And again, logic tells you that it's got to be in a facility because a large, large piece of property would deter what the town is probably looking to have be developed. We got a permitted conditional use. It complies with the conditions. We have the state approval. We have the municipal approval. We've carefully reviewed all the security. There are existing bulk variances, pre-existing bulk variances, all of which would carefully testify to by my expert. We're eliminating commercial vacancy. We're helping revitalize. There are certainly going to be a nice aesthetic improvement should this application be approved. You've seen the rendering done by my architect, and that certainly helps. This is code compliant as far as children seeing anything. There's frosted windows. There's no way they can see anything going on. Deliveries, my client will certainly try to comply early in the day. He understands that the board can condition any approval with the hours. I think 10 to 10 has been recommended. My client understands that. Of course, he's looking for more hours, but 10 to 10 is acceptable. I think there was one more point of a condition. Oh, the protesters that are being talked about in Montclair ride by their every day. We're used to ride by every day. That's at an abortion center, not a cannabis facility. We will have armed security. If the board makes that a condition, I believe they will. We have no objection to that, in particular, at the time of the deliveries. And I think we have a permitted conditional use, and that's really for the board. And I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. All right, what is the desire of this board? We have a lot of things on the table. How would you like to proceed?
I sure feel I think it should be clarified before you vote on it. That's my opinion. It's definitely not clear.
I, I just don't know which measurement gets it for less than the 500 feet. Besides measuring from the back corner of the property to the other property, which doesn't sound like that's going to hold.
If you measure from the back of the property to the front door, you run to 500 feet.
No, the, the, the building, the building isn't 100 feet long, it's only 50 feet long.
So you got minus 50 feet from it.
Property is 50, 50?
No, 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 no.
No, the, the building.
The building is 50 feet, not 100. Like Sheldon was saying, it was 100 feet.
A lot, a lot.
A lot.
But if you measure from the back door, the back door is 50 feet, it's.
Whatever you were saying, it was, you subtract 50 from.
Yeah, it's.
Or add 50 to it.
I got a question for you, Tom. This was a coffee shop. Was it ever permitted? Did it ever get a CO? Because they're going, saying that the loading dock, it was already pre-existing condition, but was this ever?
I remember when Joe opened it, but I, I don't, I don't know if it came from the board or anything.
I think he just opened it without any permits or any CO. So then it wouldn't be a pre-existing condition with the loading dock because it wasn't permitted.
Did they get the CO when they bought it? Have they got a CO, CO? What, the loading dock? I, I, I'm more concerned about smoke shops and convenience stores that are selling cannabis than, than this. This is, this is secured lockdown. You can't see in, there's a security room when you get inside of it. What people do outside of it, they're going to do anyway. Uh, in, in terms of the distance, measuring from the back of a property, I don't, I don't see that holding up. I see door to door holding up. Front corner of the property line to the other property line, maybe. Uh, but again, in the strip mall, that's a good argument there. I just don't see a realistic scenario where it ends up less than 500. I, I don't know. I don't know. Uh, it, it, we could have them measure it, our professionals do it, whichever way that they do it. But again, in every possible way, and if one comes up, we think about it then, but is that worth it? I don't know. That's a stretch. And if that's the only reason people are denying this, that's not, may not be a valid reason if it comes up.
Well, I think if the ordinance says within 500 feet, and so within 500 feet, that's a huge concern.
It's a facility.
And it's not clear.
It says facility, so you're going to talk about the structure with it, where it resides in those four walls that it is in. That is the facility.
That's your interpretation.
That can be argued though, right? So it puts us in a place.
Your interpretation.
I mean, what's, what's, I don't know what interpretation the facility would be. It's not property.
Well, it doesn't, our property line either.
No. Property line be a property line.
Property line.
Within the property, then you can, you debate the property, the facility is a structure.
Correct. All right, so, um, do we, do we have the town measure?
I, I, is that who we trust?
Yeah, it seems to hurt us.
Should I hurt, sorry?
Well, I was going to do it, I'd do it with a GPS, and that way I'd get an exact coordinates of the front door, the, the, you know. I guess someone out there will just measure everything. And then we could just close between the coordinates and see where the distances are. The other alternatives take tax maps, but they have to piece them together probably on different sheets. It's probably not as accurate as using GPS.
And I guess you can confirm with your attorney to make sure that it complies?
Well, I still got, I got to look, see.
I'll talk with Joe.
If I can find any law on it, I don't know that I'm going to be able to, but I, I'm, I'm sure there is some law on it because conditional uses and distances within conditional uses is not a unusual thing. And I'm sure we won't be the first ones to have looked at the question.
I was just asking Jackie, I, like, but they do plenary licenses. I think she told me it meant they measured this door to door.
But in, in that definition.
To me, that's kind of similar to what we're, we're looking at.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll, I'll do the measurements. I'll, I'll talk with Joe and do whatever measurements he need. It goes pretty quick.
So if, if, if the pleasure is to adjourn us for that additional information, the next question would be, when could we have this information by?
When is our next meeting?
Well, you have a regular December meeting.
Oh, my father, but, um.
Can you say one more thing?
Yeah, I don't know if we made that decision yet, though, Bob, but go ahead, you can say.
If the board's pleasure is to have it measured, that isn't the issue. The issue is the method of measuring. And I think my argument's as clear as could be. The zoning ordinance requires property. This requires structure, and that's the difference.
That may be true, but all of this may be required for some superior court judge to make a decision on it. And this board may not have all the information it wants right now to make that decision. And I think it's fair that the board feel comfortable with whatever.
I understand what I'm saying, that's the issue. The measurement, I don't think is the issue. I think it's the method of measuring is the issue, not the distance itself. Mr. Venero's looking for a measurement. I think it's pretty clear what the measurement is. It's where do you measure to, do you measure property line to property line? Seems like it might be less than 500. You measure facility to facility, it's not, it's 590 feet, as conceded to by Mr. Sheldon, as measured, or by George, 589. So facility to facility, we're more than beyond the distance. If you're talking property line to property line, that's a different story. And my argument is, that's not the way to measure it, obviously. So I think the key issue, if you're going to adjourn before you make a decision, is to determine what is the method of measuring, not what the distance is. I don't think distance is an issue, but Tom can go out and double check.
Well, there's a possibility that the measure, that the answer may not be readily available. And without any definitive answer on that, then the way in which Tom measures it might, might sway a person on the board. If there are no measurements other than property line to property line that measure less than 500 feet, then I would think it would be hard pressed for the board to say that that's not at least 500 feet. But if the rear of the building to the front door of the daycare facility is also less than 500 feet, that might be something important for the board to know. So I think it's, I, I think until we have an answer as clear as we can get it on how the methodology should be, and also what are those distances? We know one of the distances. We know from front door to front door is roughly 590 feet. So that seems to me to be at least one thing we've been able to agree on here. But, you know, I will say, just so the board doesn't think I'm usurping any authority here, the board has the ability, if it so chooses, a member has an opportunity to make a motion saying that they are comfortable with the 500 feet and to make that motion. That's up to you. And I don't, I don't want to say, what I'm, what I'm saying is legal opinion, but it's really up to you six people here to vote as to how you want to proceed.
Like, like I said, I think it should also be checked that it, there was ever a CO for that coffee shop. Because we're saying that the, the loading zone was a pre-existing condition. If he was never authorized to have that shot there, then it's not a pre-existing condition because it was never permitted.
Well, I don't, I don't know the history of the building. Some buildings, some buildings exist before there's a zoning code. This is a pretty old-looking building. If the building existed before the zoning code existed, then you could have a grandfathered use with all, whatever those, you know, violations of the zoning code are. I don't know the answer to that. Theoretically, I would be, I don't know how long that coffee shop was there for, but I would be surprised to find out that it had no CO in all those years that it was there. But it may not have ever come before a board for variance approval. But we, we can find that stuff out. What's the variances we're asking for right now? Load, they're all pre-existing conditions.
They're saying that the loading dock is pre-existing. And my contention is, if it was never properly permitted, then that's, they need a variance warrant. And it's a pretty important point. Like I said, if you were loading a $20,000 project, a product, you should be off, off premises. The other one, we made him pull into the garage, pull the garage down.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Here, my feeling is, there's no parking. If I'm driving something that expensive, I'm not going to park 58 spaces down the street and carry that down the street. I want to get as close to the, as close to the facility as I can, double park, go inside. You got a light rail right there. People go around the double park car.
Double park is a problem, as isn't, and the police really need to step it up on that. That, that, across town is a problem. Uh, this is not going to help that problem, obviously, as you're saying. Uh, did you guys get a CCO for that property?
I do represent the. Here's a certificate about your, on your purchase.
Uh, yes, 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 it's on your purchase.
So if they got the CCO, whatever use or whatever might be, might have.
My client's saying yes.
They have to do the.
They won't get it on business, right?
It would only be on the residential.
So if they got a residential, so if something was, something was granted, so there is a certificate that says what's in that building. Which means it would verify on the CCO. Usually he writes it on there. One apartment, one store.
Right, but we would only have a look at the apartment.
On the thing, they usually will say something, wouldn't they?
Yeah, it should.
It's not going to say that, because then he'll try to delete the store out later. He'll say it on there, saying.
Yeah, it, it, whatever it was.
Yeah, you would do the CCO, he would, he'd draw, he'd do the inspection on that. But he'd say it on the actual thing, this is, this and this.
Yes.
So there should be some documentation that Frankie gave out that says what it is.
All right, so what's the desire of this board?
That's easy to confirm. The, the, the harder, that's easy to confirm. You can confirm that again tomorrow, it's a piece of paper, it's black and white, says it doesn't say. The harder thing is the measurement of how we want to look at the distance.
Can we have it done by December 14th, Tom?
Yeah, maybe.
Could holler, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's tough to get people, surveyors scheduled. I want to see when the next meeting is.
The next meeting is until December 14th. We can't do this in two weeks?
Uh, we would prefer to be on that agenda if it's possible, so we can finish this up, of course. I think I have to be here anyway, or somebody from my office does.
You, you will be here anyway.
There you go. Well, I mean, you could put it on for that night, but there's, you know, Thomas indicated that it may or may not be.
Well, let's at least put it on, maybe Tom can get it done. And maybe you could do your research, certainly my office will do some research too.
I'm not worried about my end of it.
So then what I'm hearing is that we're going to adjourn this meeting until December 14, and no other notice would be necessary?
And we're looking for two things?
And we're looking for two things, the CO and the, um, measurements that Tom will get in a couple of.
How do we work on?
Couple of angles through working with our attorney.
I, I, yeah, I think, I mean, I think it should be that you are asking the town's professional to do the measurements from, whatever measurements he, I don't, Tom, I don't know how you do this physically. I'm sure you're not walking it. So how, how do you measure these?
Oh, we're doing with a GPS, so get a satellite, get a coordinate, get extra coordinates.
But my question is, how do we determine what's the right wording?
Which points are we measuring from? Are we door to door?
Who's going to determine it?
Are we door to door, public streets? No, I think he's got to do it more than one way. Ah, yeah.
I just want what's right.
No, I understand it.
If it's, if it's right, it's right. If it's not, it's not. I'm not looking to sway, but I want to be clear on it.
I think that what you should expect is that Tom and I will speak about all the different ways in which this can be measured while I'm researching how it should be, how it should be.
Well, how do we determine the ordinance, what it meant, I guess, totally?
I, I'm not as concerned, I know what the ordinance says. Now I just have to see if there's any law, case law, that talks about how you measure the 500 feet.
Okay.
So if I can find something, I'm going to certainly report that back to you. And if I can, if there's anything really definitive on it, I will report back to the boards before the meeting so that you have that in advance.
I think it should go from door to door. All right, so, is that high enough?
Well, now, you, you had, you needed a motion.
Yes.
You need a motion to adjourn this to the December 14th meeting.
I think we need to clarify on how we do this measurements.
Yeah.
Like, tough, couple of different ways, door to door, property line to property line. Is there any other way? Not the rear property, that's just, they're dumb things.
He just stated he's going to look up case law.
I, I don't know the answer yet if there's a legal question. So I don't want to necessarily limit the way in which Tom can measure it. If I find out something different that.
Right, hopefully they need to come up with precedent and, and by then.
If he does, then we go by that. But if we don't in that time, then he'll at least have several different ways done, and then we, we might be deciding again. Right. That could, that, that could be exactly what happens if there's no control in law. They have to decide between different ways in which it's measured. And the other option, it could, it could end up landing in every which way he measures, it's still over 500 feet. That's possible. You know what I mean? So that's, that's a possibility. And it's a moot point, you know? Then we don't have to worry about that for, so what are the ways we're entering?
All right, I'm getting a motion that we will be, um.
Motion to adjourn until December 14?
With the conditions that are set forth between our attorney, town engineer, and, I guess, code, code.
Code official.
Thank you, Bob.
Roful. Taylor Lindelob. Yes. Mr. Nero.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Fornin.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Thank you for your time and attention. I'll see you on the 14th.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second.
All are favor?
Aye.
See everybody, December 14th.